Four, the invocation will be provided by First Baptist Pastoral Care Captain Tom Wicks. Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Louis Alford, please stand.
Each morning when I start the day, I read a Psalm, and it was eighty-two. And I noticed in verses three and four, it said, "Defend the weak and the fatherless, uphold the cause of the poor and oppressed, rescue the weak and the needy, deliver them from the hand of the wicked." Thought that was interesting. Let's, let us pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for the opportunity to offer the invocation here, and I ask your blessing on this meeting tonight. Give the commissioners wisdom in what they say and how they vote. Thank you for their willingness to serve, and may all they do and say bring honor to them and to you, our heavenly Father. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We'll now go to the mayor for the report from the mayor. Mayor Davis.
Quick tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. I've got three things to report on fairly quickly. Just wanted to give everyone a quick snapshot of the Ram Clinic that was held recently here in Cleveland, sponsored this year by the Cleveland Kiwanis Club. Free services that were provided at this Ram Clinic, and as you know, we have these every, approximately every three years. They provided dental vision, medical, women's health. We had two-hundred-and-forty unique patients, three-hundred-and-thirty-three patient services provided, a hundred-and-ten eye exams, and new prescribed pairs of glasses were provided, and we had two-hundred-and-ninety-one extractions. Total value of services that day was a hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars. So the Ram Clinic continues to provide a wonderful service to citizens here in Bradley County. Septic Tank Report, a little bit of progress since last month. Our C and D has eighty-nine contracts, eighty-four have been completed, so we still have five, but that is up three from last month. And the ones that we did in-house, nineteen contracts, sixteen have been completed. Still got three to go there, so five and three, eight more, eight more projects to get that little service that we provided to citizens completed. And then I know everyone has heard by now, but I wanted to mention it, the fatal fire that we had over the weekend here in Bradley County. Sunday morning about eleven-thirty, Bradley County Fire and Rescue and the EMS and the Sheriff's Department all responded to a fire call in the northern part of the county, just off Tasso Lane. The, later, the two patients, fire victims, I guess you would say, did pass away. One was the ninety-three-year-old mom and her sixty-eight-year-old daughter, who was, I assume, a caretaker for her. Both of them succumbed to the smoke inhalation. So I just ask you to keep those people in mind, the families, and of course, the people that responded to the call also. It's a pretty big deal when something like that happens, so I ask you to remember those in your prayers. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. We'll now go to reports from the committees and our districts. We'll start on our left, Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I do want to welcome Ms. Parks here this evening. We had a library lunch where a few commissioners and the mayor attended last week, and it was phenomenal to hear about all the opportunities and the things that the library provides this community, and really look forward to getting on that flight simulator here pretty soon. Before that meeting, I got to attend the Truesdale Outdoor Ribbon Cutting with Chairman Crye. Was there as well, and I encourage all commissioners, if you haven't been to Truesdale and seen this new outdoor space for the students over there to use, it is phenomenal, absolutely amazing work that they were able to use with funds that the county commission voted on and provided them through the HCI grants. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Alford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This one item relayed for live Saturday. I broke my record. I ate eight ice cream sandwiches instead of seven. The winner of that was a Cleveland engineer firefighter. That sucker ate twenty-nine of those things. How he done that, I don't, I never know. Raised five-hundred-and-seventy bucks. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, that is all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason, please.
Thank you, Chairman, six districts doing well. I have nothing to report, thank you.
Great, Commissioner Thompson?
I've got a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would like a count of how many city kids do we have in county schools? And I'd like that request sent to the schools and us to find out how many kids we have in there. We might be building these schools for the city, I don't know. And so I'd like to find out how many we have. And I don't know how we're going to get rid of them, except the fact that we don't have room for them. And only room that we have is we build more on, hold them. And I don't know why we should spend their money, they don't want to spend theirs, the city don't. So I'd like to know that. And there's one other thing I'd like to know, and I keep seeing that. We've got a young man sitting down here that's got two jobs. I want to know which job he's on, is he getting paid for both of them? Yes?
No, right now, he's on free gratis work at the ambulance service, but most of his time is out there, I will admit. He's on loan, I would say.
Well, I'd just like to know, you know, I like to watch the county money, see where it goes, because I don't get a lot of it myself, so I'd just like to.
It is a situation where that directorship is much more, I don't want to say more important, but it is, I guess, urgently more important at this time until we have time to see about getting someone else. But in the meantime, things seem to be doing pretty good.
Well, okay, just long as it ain't getting too sourish.
Anything else? Okay, Commissioner Gilbert?
I too'd like to thank Ms. Parks for introducing me to the library out there. I've finally got a library card, I've never been in that library, and you talking about absolutely gorgeous. It is amazing what you can find out in the Cleveland Bradley County Library. And I can, I can say that listening is fundamental, because I can listen to books now as I'm going down the road, that's pretty cool. So I sure do appreciate your gratitude towards us, and that'd be all for me.
Commissioner Winters?
Seventh district's in good shape, that's all I have.
Commissioner Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Director Parks, thank you for your hospitality and a great time we had in talking about the vision that you guys have for the library and the, all of the components that go into that. We're very appreciative to hear that. Also, thank you to Tom Wicks, who came out and gave our invocation. Now, Tom does an awesome job of pastoral care, not just for First Baptist, but for our community. And he, he's one of those guys that I really appreciate and love because he has a servant's heart, and I'm very thankful for Tom. He does a lot of the things that people don't know about in caring and mentoring and loving those that are heartbroken and going through tragedy. So very thankful and appreciative of Tom today. Other than that, all is well, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Boy, they still thunder there, but also Director Keisha Parks is here, along with Shannon Bismarck, who is our teen librarian. So we appreciate both of them being here. This is our first time ever coming to a county commission meeting, so don't act up. Be come, come back another day, it'll be much more exciting, I'm sure. Yeah, give it a couple of weeks. Also, Tom Wicks, this past Saturday, Lee University Baseball Coach Mark Brew and his staff honored all the veterans here in southeast Tennessee with their annual Military Appreciation Day. Tom Wicks, who Commissioner Collins just referenced, is a Marine fighter pilot, fought in Vietnam. And he sang the National Anthem this past Saturday, I've known him for years. Just as he says, a great guy. So I do, I do appreciate Lee University extending that and, and all that they do for the veterans. Real quick, Mayor, any word on the city and their response to our hundred-and-fifty thousand for emergency shelter? I know we got a couple of months before that comes out, but they, I was told it was on their agenda, I don't know what they.
Yeah, I've not heard anything back from them, so I don't know.
That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Alford, please.
Yes, as far as I know, Second District's doing well. I just, one thing for Mr. Mason. Michigan Avenue, right past Harries, and it's in the city, I'm not sure. It's been a mattress and some garbage laying out on the side of the road for a week now, nobody from the city's bothered to pick it up, so if you don't mind, if you're out that way, it's just right past Harries there at Michigan Avenue, Paul Hough, corner. And other than that, Second District's doing well.
Commissioner Hughes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add a resolution to the May sixth vote. It's a resolution declaring approximately two-point-oh-seven acres of Bradley County property located on Johnson Boulevard, map and parcel number zero-five-eight-P-H-zero-two-two-point-zero-zero as surplus property and authorizing the county mayor to offer the property for sale by public bid. The property, or the resolution would give the SPCA the opportunity to purchase the property that they currently lease and make the property its permanent home to build their new facility.
Is, Mr. Chairman, is that going on a work session or a voting session?
This should be going on a voting session, this is the work session for it today.
Yes.
But this is a work session, so let's go to work. So we're going to make this surplus and then put it up for sale? This is property that they're currently on? Yes. And we have to go through the bid process, right? Well, we'll have to go through the bid process. What happens if somebody bids more than SPCA? We do, by, after talking to the county attorney, we do not have to take the highest bid, we, we can take the best bid. So in other words, if SPCA doesn't even offer a bid, but somebody else does, we want to decline it. So the only person you're going to sell this to is SPCA? It'll be put up for bid. We apparently, we thought at first the property had already been deemed a surplus, but we couldn't find the documentation from it, so it's, it would've been prior to, I don't know exactly when that would be, Mayor, but we weren't able to locate the, the paperwork showing that it was surplus already. So we're having to start from there. I, I, I understand what you say, that we don't necessarily have to take the bid if someone comes in, but wouldn't we, again, in my humble opinion, be operating under, I don't know, not doing business in good faith? Here we are, we sold them the property, we went through the same process, they, we accepted their bid, we offered the property to them, then we all know what happened last week. We're going to do that again? Up, done a form of question, as far as a rhetorical question. I mean, it just seems like it's in their face a little bit, I just don't understand it. But honestly, I will say this much, the property. Yeah, they, the, the letter, that they said, they clearly, plain English, best English I've ever seen. They don't want it, they don't. The, I can tell you what I was contacted with, if you wish. Yeah. Okay. Mr. Sheehan had called, or contacted me last week after our voting session. He apparently had sent an engineer over and said that the property would work for their use, and he said, "We want the property," is what he said. So.
Did that come from their board?
That came from Mr. Sheehan. Apparently, according to Mr. Sheehan, the chairman was supposed to have been here tonight to speak on behalf of that. I don't know what came up, but I was told just a few hours ago that he wasn't going to be able to make it.
Chairman?
Yes.
About three or four hands up.
I was just scrolling away, Commissioner Thompson was going to answer, attempt to answer the question. Yes.
Commissioner Alford is next.
Commissioner Alford.
I guess my question is why? Why we won't even put it on surplus? What's the reason for surplusing a piece of property that's already leased out and everything, and everything's slick, smooth? Why are we wanting to surplus it? When you've already seen a letter that SPCA is not interested in it? So why are we surplusing it?
To give them the opportunity, to give them the opportunity to purchase the property that they're already leasing.
They've already said they don't want it.
I would love to see someone here to say that, not just a letter.
Well, that's why none of them's here, because they've already sent you a letter with the.
I did not get that letter, but that's.
You need to look in your box.
But that's beside the point, the truth of it is, is that.
Everybody got the letter, everybody's got one in their box. I'll go back to my original question, why are we wanting to surplus it? That's, that's, that's not on the agenda, Mr. Howard, I'm asking, no, Mr. Hughes did. I'm asking again, why are we going to surplus it? Is there a reason? Mr. Chairman? Point of order, Chairman, point of order. I'm asking the question, and everybody else is wanting to answer it. I'm asking Mr. Hughes, why are we wanting to surplus it?
Oh, I didn't realize you were asking me.
I've asked it four times now.
Well, I didn't realize you were asking me. Commissioner Alford, the reason it had to be surplus is because we could not find the documentation showing where it was already surplused, and this would give the opportunity for them to purchase to build their new facility.
Did you not read the letter?
No, I have not read the letter.
You need to look in your box. And also, I think Lori sent everybody one to start with.
However, I go back to my original statement.
It doesn't matter, why are we wanting to surplus it? Is there a reason, is someone else sitting out there wanting to buy the property, or, or what's the deal? It's only, what, two-point-seven acres? Why are we wanting to surplus a piece of property that's already leased, that's sitting there and nothing's happening, everything's smooth with it? Why are we wanting to surplus it and sell it in front of God knows who?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Along with what Commissioner Alford is saying, that third "whereas" is simply untrue. This is Bradley County's determined it has no current use for this property. We have a three-year lease on it, like he said. So how can you say we have no current use for this property? It's under lease. What are you going to do, kick them out? Then where are you going to take your cats and dogs? And like he said, the letter clearly says they are not interested in the property. I verified that again. The board has said they are not interested in the property. The person referred to is not on the board. So we are using the property, we have a three-year lease on the property. The letter says to you all that they are not interested in this piece of property. So like Commissioner Alford said, why do we want to surplus it when it is being used? It's being leased. There's hundreds of dogs and cats out there that would disagree with you when you say it's not being used.
Commissioner Gilbert?
I'm on that board, and I never have voted on that or never heard of it. Matter of fact, I don't even know if I got the paper, it may have come through an email, but we never voted on it.
Well, Lori had the letter, and she put it in everyone's mailbox last week and emailed.
And. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you. I find it funny that nobody's read this letter. It was emailed, put in your box, and I read it last week and put it into the minutes of the voting session. I read during the meeting last week, so if you guys, maybe people weren't paying attention, maybe people weren't listening, but I read last week in the voting session where it stated that they did not want this property, and they wanted the property that we voted seven-seven last week to not rezone after they had spent and bid a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to get the property. Now, to me, this seems like, I mean, to me, it's a slap in the face that we voted down seven-seven after we voted thirteen to one to sell them this property and accept their bid on this property. Now we're saying, go ahead and try again and rebid this for the property that they want. And whether we can take the, the best bid, or the highest bid, or whatever it is, if I was them, if, if this passes, if I was them, I'd bid a dollar. I'd bid a dollar. And, and, and that's, and it makes no sense that we would accept one dollar for this property. That we would, it, it's just, I, I'm.
And they can turn around and sell it for.
It is.
Commissioner Lyd.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm, I haven't yielded my time back. I just don't get what we're doing. I, I don't understand why that we have, that this is the place that we're at. We've literally said that the property that we voted to surplus, voted to accept their bid, knowing that this is the property, knowing exactly what they were going to do there, then we vote to deny the rezoning, now we're going to sell a piece of property that's under lease for the next three years, that is in good standing with the county, and that if the SPCA did move, we, we, the county could use for something else. We literally have a juvenile center right next door that needs more parking, that needs more building, that has literally stated that they need a new ten, eight, however many million dollars building, that there's property right next door that, that is usable. So for me, I don't see how this gets supported at all, but it, it's just wild, and I'll yield back.
Commissioner Lyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just saying, and I know I'll probably get fussed out about this, on the SPCA board, the time that I was there, the SPCA board does make decisions, but no property is bought unless Mr. Chandler and Mr. Sheehan sign the check. So no matter what the board says, nothing gets bought unless they say it gets bought, by my understanding. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Like I said, I'm on this board, and I never heard of this piece of paper until now. You say you read it?
I did.
That's perfectly fine, I wasn't listening. But it don't matter if you read it, but it was never voted on in the board. I don't know where the paper come from.
You could check your email, there was one in your box, and it was read in two different meetings.
What I'm saying is, I'm on the board, I go to the meetings, I've missed one meeting in the last, it's been three months ago. And it was never brought up in that meeting. The SPCA board, which is collaborated of several people, and I'm one of them, I've never seen this paper till now, but it was also, Lori said she put it in their, our, when did you put this in our emails?
Weeks.
A week and a half ago, so I've never seen this letter till now. I wouldn't pay attention to my email. But I never voted on this book, letter at all. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Commissioner Alford?
I made a good point on the juvenile thing. We fool around, put that up for sale and sell it, and somebody comes in and buys it and builds something else. So a juvenile center is going to be left out high and dry because they need some of that property probably also, if they ever decide to expand. So, yeah, I just, I'm like, you know, Mr. Rogers, I have seen no reason why we'd even consider putting this property out there again and go through this same arran, arrangement that we just got through voting down, some people voted down, and fight that fight again. I just don't see why we won't have a bunch of people sitting in here again fighting that same, same, same scenario.
Commissioner Lyd?
Isn't that property already zoned commercial?
No, that property is zoned residential, just like the last property was.
So how, how are they running the, the animal shelter that they're in?
Because of the lease.
While we own it, it's our property. But when we sell it, it's zoned our too, so it'll have.
So if they buy it, we're going to have to do the rezoning?
No.
No?
Mr. Chairman, if I have a second?
Yes, go ahead.
Actually, what you're asking about is what I was going to come back and talk about. The property is going to have to be rezoned, but it has to be rezoned through the city itself, which will not deal with county at all. It'd be in, this is strictly my judgment. It would be hard to deny it because it's been on the property for over ten-plus years.
Anyone else? Thank you. We'll go, let's see, we, we were at you, you have anything else, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you. We have no agenda items, we'll move along to the communication from the audience. I'll recognize and provide five minutes to anyone wishing to speak. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
How's everybody doing? I was sent here by Steve and Cheryl, and I can tell you that if you do what's proposed here, they will not bid even a dollar. They don't want that property, it doesn't fit. You're going to take a two-plus-million-dollar project, and if you measure it out, the only way you can put that project on that property is to turn it longways diagonal, or put almost most of it in the street, there's no parking. This is not going to happen, there's not going to be even the first bid, not, not from the SPCA. I don't know what else has to be said. This letter came directly from the SPCA. This is not a forgery, this is not a joke. They will not bid this property. I don't even understand what the thought process is here. The individual who said that they would like to have that consideration is not on the board. Whether they, you say they signed a check, that's not necessarily so. There's not going to be a bid. No one authorized that individual to speak for that. This has been spoken of more than once. That's not a place that they want. It's not, they don't appreciate that the county has given that, and it's done wonders for the county. The organization has saved six million dollars to the county. It's not that, it's that that's not where they want to put a new two-plus-million-dollar project. And they're not going to lease it, of course, because you're not going to build a building on somebody else's leased property, that makes zero sense. So I'm just telling you, you can vote like you want, do what you want, but they're not going to bid it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Dan, can I ask you a question? Are you actually on the board also?
I was for seven years.
You was for seven, are you a board member at this time?
No, I'm not.
I, I'm glad that you said that Steve and Cheryl asked you to speak on their behalf, because.
No, what I said is, they sent me with these letter because you had said that you didn't get one, and I didn't know who else might not have gotten one.
But what I said was, you said you, they told you to speak on their behalf.
Sent me here to speak about this.
Okay.
And the fact that there would not be a bid. And I mean, you can vote like you want, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't affect me, it doesn't stop my paycheck, doesn't keep me from going anywhere I want to go. But there will be no bid.
It's, you're doing the same thing that Mr. Sheehan is doing, according to you, he's not a board member, and you're speaking on behalf of the board.
Did I, did I ask you to do something? Did I ask you to make a commitment to do something that no one on the board? No, I didn't. I came here to bring these.
So you're, is this your own personal feelings?
This is, you said, you told me personally that you didn't have one. You hadn't seen it.
I don't, but I'm asking you, is this your personal feelings, or is this the board's?
This is not only, this is not only from the SPCA, but this is also my personal feeling.
So you are speaking on behalf of the SPCA?
Yeah, do you want to call her? How about I do that?
That's all I want to know, I want to make sure if it's official or not.
I'll call them both right now, we'll put them on a, we'll put them on a party call.
The last I'd heard was Steve was supposed to have been here tonight, and I don't know where he's at.
Something came up.
I understand that. I understand that, and I don't deny that, that something came up, but it would have been nice to have heard it from Steve.
Well, I can get my phone, let me get my phone.
I don't need to hear it off your phone. I don't need to hear it from the phone.
There be no phone calls. Don't need a call.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. Since Commissioner Hughes would love to hear it from Steve, would Commissioner Hughes be willing to move, since we had no agenda items, since we were all kind of side, sided with this, would Commissioner Hughes be willing to move this to the May thirteenth work session? And allow us to have a proper work session and bring the SPCA in, literally work through this and talk about it, and then put it on the next voting session?
Commissioner Rogers, I would normally agree with that, but we have two. Commissioner Rogers, I would normally agree with that, but we have two weeks to discuss it, well, max citizens and community and you can talk to whomever.
I, I can't, I can't talk to whomever, they're sunshine law.
This is a work session, this is a work session.
With no one here from the SPCA?
They were asked to come.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Alfred.
It's pretty obvious, if you just look, there's nobody from SPCA here, they knew this was gonna come up, so they're just gonna say, we're not gonna be there because we don't want it. So he's bringing it up something that they don't have any interest in, so why would they even show up here tonight? Mr. Sheehan or any of them, because they have voted not to do this, so that's probably the reason they're not here tonight, pretty obvious. But uh, I would also make a motion if we can to table it. Next week, we'll do that.
Mr. Thompson, please.
What's that? What's that, what did I say? If you read the letter, Howard.
Mr. Chairman?
Is there anyone else, one more time?
One more time. This letter was, if it was wrote, it was wrote by Steve Anderson. It was not approved by a board meeting at all, there was, it was never brought in a board meeting to ask if they wanted to bring this forth to county commission at all. So if he, he was acting on his self and Ms. Dunson, her name is not on here, but Steve's is. So if, if they didn't bring this to a board meeting and ask if they wanted to take it to the county commission, then he was acting on his self because I'm on that board and I'm not, I was never a form, informed of it at all.
Any, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If Mr. Sheehan is in favor, if we're going by what he would like, one of the first things he would like is for the property that they did want, because I remember him saying, this was his second order. So if he's, he's asking for something, let's give him what he originally asked for, what he really wants. If he's the one that's directing uh, us to put this up for uh, surplus. If you'll remember, when he came here that day, his first option was to uh, go ahead with the purchase and the rezoning of the land out there at uh, Waterfall. So, do we wanna go back to the, he has a ri- I mean, if we're going by what he said, as far as the letter concerned, it says there in the first paragraph that this was from the board of SPCA, so I just want to solve. It, it's just, the integrity of this county commission means something, we just voted to not rezone it, not to reiterate what Mr. Rogers eloquently said, but I think one could easily say and surmise that we didn't operate in good faith, we sold them something and then we pulled the rug under them. And now we're potentially gonna do that again, I won't have it, I mean, I won't support it, I'll just tell you right now.
Anyone else?
Mr. Winters.
Just point of it, point of information, um, can a person that's presented this type of resolution for the next meeting withdraw it at this point? Is that, is that legal? Then, then the person that present this could withdraw it at this point, then have whatever dialogue needs to be had, I would, I'd suggest maybe we do that. Uh, and uh, an opportunity for, if the individuals that have spoken, who are individuals on the commission would like to come to the commission, then we won't have a vote that we have to do at that point. So if we withdraw this, then it gives an opportunity for that type of discussion to go without having a vote, would suggest that.
Mr. Hughes, what's your response?
Mr. Winters, I, I understand where you're, where you're coming from, like I said, they had an opportunity to show up, they all knew about it apparently. According to what I'm hearing now, um, Dan was here. Which, I mean, don't get me wrong, but if they were able to send him here, why could they not be here themselves?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't, thank you, I don't know what's the rush is, hell, they've got a three year lease, so we've got three years to do this, so I mean, I don't understand what the rush is. I, I don't understand why we can't wait a couple of weeks and then invite them again formally, where all of us absolutely know what's going on here, I showed up here tonight and this is on my desk. I get this from Ms. Multrie, nothing on the agenda, right? So now we come here today and we've got this on the agenda. So, and it's not even on the agenda, it's during committees and district reports. So I, I, I don't understand why we couldn't wait a couple of weeks and have a proper work session and then have a proper voting session.
Mr. Chairman, I, I honestly see where everyone's going with this, I'm not gonna pull it because I'll be happy to recognize anyone during my moment.
We uh, we don't have to pull it, but what we can do is consider a motion to table it next week along, something along those lines. And that'll solve the same issue.
Yes, it would.
And I suspect that's what will happen. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to speak from the audience?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have, I'd like to say one more thing.
Go ahead, sir.
To deem this surplus, to deem this property, property surplus, shouldn't this not go to building and land first? The building and land committee for it to be reviewed through that committee? We, we've always talked about, and I've heard you say, Mr. Chairman, we want to use our committees and, and put these through to the committees. So shouldn't these be put on the building and land committee agenda to be looked at, we were supposed to have a meeting last week, it got rescheduled, so we should be having one coming up in the next couple of weeks. That's all I got.
He's the committee chairman, he calls the committees meetings and. Commissioner Blake.
Real quick, mayor, the, uh, let's go back to the other property, uh, we deemed it surplus, we put it up, it up for sale, what's the current stat? It's still surplus, right, it's, I mean, or do we need to unsurpluse it and take, it's still ours, we didn't go through with the transaction? But it's still surplus, correct?
When they um officially rescind their offer that you've deemed very necessary to happen now, then you would have an option of taking the second bid or just doing nothing, so. You could put it back out for bids again, you could take the second bid, but after all of the stuff that went on over the last two weeks, I doubt that the other bidder would wanna, want it anymore because it's a swamp according to some people and who's, who's gonna build a house in a swamp? Had nothing to do with the rezoning, by the way, but it, it was deemed to be a swamp, so now the second bidder's probably gone by the way. So at the end of the day, once they rescind it and he goes, he doesn't want to continue on, then you'll have a option of, do we put it up for bids again or do we just sit on it like we're doing that valuable property on the railroad on the north side of the county?
But it is, it is, it is still.
It's still surplus, yeah.
Can we, can we unsurpluse it?
Well, if you don't vote to move on with taking bids on it, then it just sits there as surplus.
Commissioner Gilbert.
I agree a hundred percent with you, Gary.
Sir?
I agree a hundred percent, that right there is wetlands, it's swamp, and it needs to be given to the sixth district to put a park in or swim in or whatever they need to do around it, put a fence or whatever.
No, I, I was, I, I was, I was saying that based on what. I was saying that what was based on what was presented to you all over the last two weeks by someone who doesn't do that for a living, it's a, it's a wetlands and a swamp. Uh, the people that uh, did the uh, perk testing and the, you know, the uh, TDEC uh, very much disagree with all of that, but uh, you all listened to the presentations here, so based on that, it is a swamp and not, not any value to it. I'm glad we've got the fire station built or we wouldn't be able to have it there either, I don't guess.
But you said that the, the person that bid the sixty thousand dollars on it?
Wanted to build a house on it.
They wouldn't want it now because it's wetland.
They wouldn't want it now because your presentation says it was a wetlands, I didn't say it was a wetlands, uh, TDEC didn't say it was a wetlands.
Okay, swamp.
They presented you a perk test on the property, they presented you all of the facts about the property, TDEC did. Do you not get a copy of that either? Those people presented you the TDEC information.
Well, I didn't, I walked the property, my shoes was wet.
TDEC probably didn't walk it, but they sure gave them the information that they could move forward on with building.
Mr. Thompson?
Uh, Lori Windsor, uh, next meeting, it's on a, what? No, I mean, uh, we'll, we'll call, I'd like to call the building and land committee about an hour before next meeting. When is it, next Monday?
No.
Monday week, isn't it?
Yeah, May, May sixth.
Yeah, May sixth, an hour before then. We'll do that, call a land building committee.
To Mr. Thompson, or?
Chairman?
Yes.
You wait to May sixth, we'd already voted on this resolution that's sitting in front of you now.
No, you vote on it next week. May sixth is the voting session.
Next week's the voting session.
No, we're not.
No, we're not voting next.
Oh, so it, next week's the work?
No, 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 we're not.
Oh, so I'll, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The, the reason it's been seen as surplus on this resolution is no more than to back up, the mayor thought it, or was saying it was deemed surplus years ago, it's the reason that he leased, he ended up leasing it. Um, we, it was apparently before our county attorney started working there, the one we have now, and she was unable to find the documentation, it's the only reason we're doing a surplus.
Any other questions, comments? Alright, any other, any other people or individuals from the audience would like to speak for the commission? Alright, we'll go to the uh, announcements, there will be a Republican Party committee meeting, or not committee, but a Republican Party meeting here at six PM tomorrow night in the commission room, Main Street Cruisin', April twenty seventh, noon to four PM. Downtown, Bradley County Schools Road Show, April thirtieth, nine AM to ten thirty AM at Lake Forest School. The next meeting will be the voting session, Monday, May the sixth at seven PM at.